Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the two. Ladies, if you please. Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call to order. Our invocation this evening will be given by Corey Scott.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to gather today. Grateful for this great state of North Carolina and grateful for this great county, Rockingham County. And ask thy blessing upon our leaders, upon the citizens. And we are grateful to gather in this planning board meeting and pray and are grateful for those who serve the community, both in the county employees and also the planning board members. And pray that as we, these proceedings, that we might have thy, the guidance, the wisdom and the insight and the spirit that we need in order to appropriately resolve and to adjudicate the issues and the proposals that are before us. Bless us to be civil and kind and loving to each other. Thus we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Let the record show that a quorum of members is present. The next item on the agenda is adoption of this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The agenda is adopted. Next item is approval of the minutes for the August 12th, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make approval for the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the August 12th, 2024 meeting. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The minutes are approved. The following recitation offers an explanation of zoning map changes and our procedures. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. For your general information, the recommendations that will be forwarded this evening will be heard at the Commissioners' meeting on October 21st. Is that the correct date, Marcy?
I think so.
A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality. Each case on our agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the planning board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the planning board will provide a public comment, period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment regarding any rezoning case being heard by this board must sign the case file roster, located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. As everyone here intending to speak, sign the roster. If not, we'll give you an opportunity right now to do it. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the planning board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the planning board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. Following the public comment period, the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal, and this will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. At this time, we're going to call upon staff to introduce our first case tonight. Zoning map amendment request 2024-14.
Good evening. This is rezoning case 2024-14. It is a request to rezone three parcels of land that are currently a combination of residential agriculture and residential protected to a combination of highway commercial and residential mixed. Don't let that scare you too much. It's not primarily highway commercial. It's only about 10 acres of it, I believe. PIN numbers are there for you to see. This is along Gold Hill Road, just off of 220. It's in New Bethel Township, and this is a standard rezoning, so no conditions are applicable. This is our vicinity map. Again, it's our southwest corridor of the county where we see our growth currently. Whoops. This is the zoning map. As you see, the northern parcel and the little sub thing on the north side, that little small two-acre lot, they're currently zoned residential agricultural. It's difficult to see on this map, but the southern lot is the one that's got a little bit of the residential protected on it just along that little curve in Gold Hill on the south side. The remainder of that tract is RA. Land use map has this in both the G2 and the G3 corridors. The majority of this project is in, or this rezoning is in the G3 corridor, which calls for high-density levels of residential growth and commercial development. The G2 land class does call as well for residential development and some commercial. The commercial, however, would be proposed in the G3 part of this southern tract. This is just a quick parcel map showing you just the area itself. There is some ponds, or there are some ponds in the general vicinity and on the parcels to some effect. The southern parcel, you can see from here, is where they're proposing the division of the roughly 10 acres to the west of that southern side for highway commercial, the remainder being residential mixed. Again, this is in our G3 mixed land use class and some of the G2. It does call for high-density growth. Staff has found this to be consistent with our land use plans. And given the character of the intents of the land use plan and other developments in the general area that have been approved, we find it reasonable as well. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
I see on here that we do have public water, but not sewer.
Correct.
The sewer is at, what, Gold Hill?
I believe it runs along US 220 there. I can't remember which side of the road it is currently.
On that side of Gold Hill.
I think it is. I think it cuts over further south. So it's right there. I think talks have been also discussed with engineering, but that's not really germane to the rezoning at this time.
I have a question. What is this, the, what is the LI?
LI is Light Industrial. There's a little.
Yeah, so there's.
I forget what they do right there, but we recently did something for them not too long ago to do a site plan amendment for their building operations. I just can't remember what the operations are currently.
Okay. Do you have a rendering with the corridor in it?
Growth corridor.
That's what it is? That's it right there? So everything in the purple is growth corridor, right?
Yeah, everything in the purple is our G3 land class. That bluish area is G2. And like I said, it's a very small portion of it. And that portion, from my understanding, would be the residential mixed part, or will include the residential mixed part. So it stays true to the character of the remaining areas in that, the remaining subdivisions in that area.
So you would say at least 80 to 90% of this is in the corridor?
Oh, yeah, easily.
Has there been any interest from outside, either by phone or email or?
We've had several phone calls. Victoria's had a few that she said were in opposition. About how many, you think? Five, six? Most of mine, I had about seven or eight. They were just general inquiries asking what's going on. But nothing, nothing that I experienced was anything with any kind of opinion. Victoria said that she did have a few that were opposed. I did have a conversation with another gentleman. I believe maybe interested in what may be happening there from a professional standpoint. So I don't know if that was for, against, or just an inquiry.
I'd just like to say, too, I was on the Board of Commissioners when this 220 corridor plan was put into place to the 68th split. So this is designed exactly what the intention was of that corridor plan. And I know we may have some speakers, but to me, it meets the guidelines and the whole purpose of our corridor plan. And there's an 8-inch water line that goes down Gold Hill and turns and stoves out down toward Washburn four ways. And so that water would be on the north side of Gold Hill Road. Existing water?
I believe so, yeah.
It is. I'm very familiar with this. And these are nice homes that's being built out there, too, by the developers. Some of the nicest homes that you'll find in Rockingham County.
Any other questions for Marcy?
Is this 10 acres on the southern parcel set aside for highway commercial?
That's what we were told when we came back to this and revisited. Mr. Rakestraw is here, can speak to any specific questions about ideas, plans, and things like that. But yeah, it looks like it's, according to the map, it's like 9.999. So it's roughly 10 acres to the west side of that southern lot. So it'd be the 220 side of it, right next to the light industrial.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and address.
Harry Rakestraw, 283 Fitch Farm Road, Reesville, North Carolina. And members of the board, I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have. Basically, I'm just trying to bring this in line with the 220 corridor plan. And for the area that it's in, I think this is the best and most practical use for the land, you know, where it's located there. Because residential next door, and there's some commercial right on the side of where we're designating it 10 acres commercial. So it all sort of fits in together there. And I think it's, actually, a commercial's only behind it, some of it, too, on that south side. But we're not going for commercial for the whole thing, just for that 10 acres.
Any questions for Mr. Rakestraw? Okay, we'll hear from the public, and you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Gwen Lance. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Gwen Lance. I live at 430 Neal Road. I'm not really against this. I said I was against this. I'm not against development. I am horrified that a year ago, we changed highway commercial to anything legal. I think that is a horrible designation to use. It lasts into, I don't know what the right word is, but forever. And to have no control as a county for what someone is going to put there, as long as it's legal, I think is dangerous. I am also concerned about the traffic on Gold Hill Road and there at 220. You cannot even turn north onto 220 between the hours of 4:30 and 6 o'clock without taking your life in your own hands. It's dangerous. But no one can tell us what they're going to do with the road. Everyone just, whenever we ask anything about 220, Gold Hill, anything, they just say, they'll fix it. You know, transparency, that's what we're asking for. We're asking for people to talk to us, the neighbors. There are a lot of people who are not here tonight who are very concerned about what is going on on our end of the county. Thank you.
Janice, I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't read your last name. Well, you'll get to say, you'll get to say it again for the record. We need your name and address.
Janice Wilkinson, 891 Baggage Road, Madison. This right here is very important to me. The vision plan?
Oh, yes.
As I told you, as I told you, I was a teacher for over 30 years on the western side. I moved, I chose to teach in a rural area. I am very concerned. I mean, if you don't live on the western side, you probably don't have a concern like we, as me and my neighbors do. This is, this vision plan will direct you. And that 220 corridor plan, I don't know about that. I know about this. This says a lot about livability in our county. And I appreciate the three of you that are looking at me like you are really interested in what I'm saying. And the other two, if you're not listening, you're not, I mean, you. These are people. This is our community, our land. What you're zoning. These 10 acres are commercial. Like Gwen said, you don't know what it's going to be. Yes, and those houses are very nice. I live right on Baggage Road. Washburn Road runs into Gold Hill. And like Gold Hill, when you go out 220, onto 220, you are. And I had a friend that actually died coming out of Dollar General because the speed limit there is not obeyed. You have a safety issue there. You've gone down 220 today towards Greensboro, you could have seen black tire marks running down the highway into the grassy area. We have a situation of growth on the western Rockingham side. I would appreciate you considering, I don't know what that, as I said, I mean, sure. But this, as a teacher, you follow a plan, and then you get good results at the end. I followed a curriculum for third grade. I got good results at the end. If you follow this, which y'all, the county paid well for, my name is on the list as one of the acknowledgements. You have a very important job. I appreciate, you're not getting paid out soon. I appreciate what you do, but you have got to look out for the growth on 220. Does that mean I'm supposed to sit down?
Yes, ma'am. Those are the two speakers who have signed up to speak. Mr. Rakestraw, do you have a chance for rebuttal?
If I may, real quick, just for clarity and for everyone's sake, the 220 growth corridor, it's an economic growth corridor that they developed years ago. It's what got rolled into the G3 land class. It used to run from the county line up to Madison. G3 land class takes it from the county line to Virginia. So it's the same principle as what was formerly the 220 growth corridor, economic growth corridor. It's the same thing as the G3 land class, which calls for increased high-impact development.
And it's shown in the land use plan. That's shown in the land use.
Right, it's just not referred to the same thing as it was before.
How wide is the G3 from the interstate?
About a half mile on each side of 220. All the way up.
Yeah, right. So what it shows in that graph is that most of the plan here is in the G3.
Yes.
Okay.
As we've seen with a lot of the proposed rezonings that we've had recently on that side of the county.
So is there an intent to put in the, they said there's water available, but sewer? Are they planning?
That'd be between the developers, if they, to move forward with the county engineering department and the Board of Commissioners. That would be what would allow a high-impact development or a high-growth development, high-density development, however you want to call it. Sewer would be essential. Otherwise, they'd have to maintain a 1.7 unit density per acre.
And is that what's going on in other places? You can see along on 220 there.
Yeah, a lot of the developers have extended off the 220 line. That's why we've done the sewer upgrades with the county and doing the capacity upgrades. We've had money for years for, is to help facilitate growth and development.
Sewer upgrades on 220 South meet the criteria for the corridor?
Yes. Everything's done within the confines of what they've laid out with this plan. This plan was also made in mind with that proposed upgrade as well, so stand in hand.
Marcy, can you or Keith give us some, give us a little bit for everybody here? I'm from the western Rockingham side of the county, grew up there, live in Eden now. So no, I don't live there, but I know it well. Can you give us a little bit of historical perspective on why this, why this is the way it is? And why there's a corridor there in the first place? And how long ago were the plans? And Keith can help us with that question.
A lot of it has to do with the proposed upgrades for Interstate 73 to come through, what with 220 becoming I-73. And unfortunately, we don't have information about that. I know people are concerned about it. They think it's a transparency thing. We don't know either. It's a DOT thing. It's federal funding, it's state funding. All of that ties up into I-73 corridor, which will involve service roads, interchanges, and a lot of things that would hopefully fix a lot of the traffic impact. However, we don't have designs and details that are given to us yet either. But a lot of this growth is, and potential largely has to do with PTI. And the old transit lines also, for the truck lines going up 220 into Virginia and on the 81 and all that. So this corridor's always been heavily traveled. It's always been heavy with industry down through Guilford, all the way through Randolph, all the way actually down to Rockingham City. This is a corridor that's always seen a lot of traffic and growth, and industrial and commercial growth, and subdivision growth, if you look at the way the counties have built off of it. So that's why it's impacting this side of the county more so than the 29 route going up. 29's already been slated with I-785 as well. It's got some protected interchanges and no-access parts of the corridor. 220's less advanced than that part in the DOT's plans. That's also facilitating this growth, which this plan took into account, which the 2004 economic development corridor took into account. It's always been known, even back in the 90s, that 220 would be the growth sector of the county.
And can you give us, and I know that you might not have in-depth DOT knowledge, but is your knowledge about how DOT or the federal government manages interstates? As far as, right now, the road has direct access from Gold Hill Road or the secondary roads. Interstates, which are federally managed and DOT managed, do they have, do all interstates have access roads or no direct access from secondary roads?
From my experience, interstate standards tend to have no direct access from individual parcels. Sometimes it does from other roads with certain types of connectors. But I'm not a traffic engineer, and I'm not DOT specialist. And I'm not trying to throw DOT under the bus by any means. This has been a problematic thing for us with the RPO and a few things, trying to make sure that the funding is secured and this gets advanced past the environmental stages and stuff like that. We're working hard to get those answers and try to figure things out. It's just there's other projects in the state that have out-prioritized ours.
Right. And these folks have a valid, I mean, it is a valid concern when you're turning directly from a secondary road onto a major highway that, where the speed limits can be 70 miles an hour.
And to answer part of that, too, regardless of Interstate 73's design and whatnot, should a large-scale residential development, which I assume is the outcome goal of this, be installed? It would still go through TRC through the major subdivision process. DOT would still weigh in on it. They may require TIA, that may require some updates currently to help assist with those problems based on house rooftops and things like that and traffic counts. So it's, this isn't the end-all decision yet. When it comes to those more details, this is still high-level above picture of just a straight rezoning of property, considering all possible uses in the residential mixed corridor and for that 10 acres, all possible uses in the highway commercial. So that's what we're here to look at, and that's what we're here to think about. Those other details come at later stages when things are actually moving.
And is there any subdivision comparable nearby that can, so that our citizens can understand what it might, or visualize what it might look like?
I don't know, without knowing what the plans are. I mean, you know, you've got a bunch of the subdivisions already there with Providence Glen. You've got Dogwood down the street. There's others that are similar, they're just not, I mean, I know this looks, on the map, looks like huge, but once you put roads in, once you got controls for stormwater, you got yards. We're still not looking at like, you know, we're not looking at Jacobs Creek-Bennett Farm. We're not looking at 1,800 units, 1,600 units. It's not, not unless you're using townhomes. So like I said, we're, you know.
But those don't, those don't have access roads straight onto 220.
Jacobs Creek would, yeah, they'd be intersecting with Griffin and Bennett Farm, I believe. So, yeah, there's, as far as direct, not, you know, other than the ones that are existing out there right now, nothing comparable developed yet directly off. We do have Neal Farm, which is on Noonam Road, is the southern part. It's 78 homes. Noonam North, the Neal Place is currently looking at being developed. This is in line with the things that we've already looked at in the same corridor. Again, while we found it reasonable and consistent is because this is consistent with our plan, is consistent with our decisions. And again, it is what we're looking for. And there's other large-scale subdivisions in the region. It does meet reasonableness standards as well. Like I said, the minor, the next level down, I'm not saying minor details, this is major look. The minor look, when you're looking kind of zoomed in, that's when we get into the nitty-gritty about traffic counts, roads, number of houses, units per acre, things like that.
And what I want to make sure is that the folks that showed up here today and anybody that may be viewing this later understand that we, as a board, don't do this arbitrarily. We do study our packet. We rely on your expertise. And just because, you know, we might not be, you know, we do listen to what they have to say, but this is not done. We don't, we don't just come, we just don't show up unprepared. So I just want to make sure that people understand that and that they can feel comfortable with how we, it may look like we do things quickly here, but it's because we're prepared beforehand.
That's our goal.
I can shed a little light on a couple of things when the time is appropriate, quickly.
What I wanted to say was that after all of this information is considered, we look at the facts on the record and we make a recommendation to the Commissioners. It's not the final decision. That rests with the Commissioners. So anyone here who's dissatisfied with a decision that should come from this board, either for or against any development or zoning map, request for zoning map change tonight, you will have an opportunity to speak directly to the Commissioners when they hear this in October. So this is not final. Just want to make that clear.
Can I ask one other question, if I may? What, why residential mixed versus typically, you know, with other subdivisions, we've done RP?
We've done both. We've done residential mixed and residential protected. It's what they requested.
Okay. They didn't offer any plan or?
No, they posted that highway commercial.
I don't know. Residential mix is, it's not that much different than the other residential districts, but it does allow for townhomes, that kind of situation. districts, but it does allow for townhomes, that kind of situation. But I, like I said, this is a straight rezoning. We typically don't get into nitpicky uses, why they're going for what zoning district.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, Keith?
I've been around here a long time, maybe too long, but all this stuff started taking place in the 90s. And this is just for information, because you asked an interesting question a minute ago. I think the lady who was a teacher did, but I agree with you on the traffic. I travel that road twice a day going to work in Forsyth County. You do have to be on your toes, but it's a major corridor. I just have to be careful like everybody else and take a risk every now and then, which is unfortunate. But back in the 90s, you know, when I was on the board here, we were looking to try to create some job growth. And at that time, Reevesville had wastewater issues that didn't allow them to expand because of the state guidelines at that time. Eden was not in a position to do and expand, and due to some of their utility issues. But Meadown was in the driver's seat with water and sewer capacity. Rockingham County contracts with Midas and Meadown every year for water and sewer consumption. And we ran the line to the 220 split, and then later on, the other line went down I-73, where you see the new businesses going up. It was created for that reason, and to create fire protection for the communities out there and a source of water. And believe me, I got rung over the coals by Eden and Reevesville for spending money in Western Rockingham County, and I live in Eden. So they were pretty hot on to me, but I felt like we were making the right call, because it has created growth, and it would create some more. And if you go back to the corridor plan back in the late 90s, that we, I think that was a second corridor plan, and the county 14 was the first, I believe.
I can't remember.
I think it was. But anyways, it took about a year and a half from start to finish. We had a lot of community meetings in Huntsville, Ellisboro community. And there was a lot of opposition to some of the uses we had on the land use plan, so they were taken out after hearing from the public in the community. And of course, it was put into place. I don't know if that helps for information. And as far as the highway goes, at that time, it was pretty much still a two-lane road from Virginia all the way through down 68. And a former county manager and myself went to Washington DC to the, to Congress at the federal highway hearing program for future highways, which I-73 and 74 was on the docket for discussion. And Greensboro, delegation from Greensboro, Myrtle Beach, and all wind this down. It was very interesting that after the meeting was over with, and they, believe me, they had some high hitters in that room from Congress and the US Senate, I guess that's what you want to call them. We were called into a committee room after that meeting, and we were told that I-73 was coming soon. And it did. And as far as Rockingham County went, the secretary told myself and the delegation that 220 would be four-lane, but it would not be the interstate standards, because the money was not available at that time. But it would come one day, probably won't be in my lifetime. Unless the plans have changed, that's what was on the table, and that's been 30 years ago. So I just wanted to share that. I mean, it's sort of interesting information, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcy. Any discussion before we consider a motion? In that case, we'll consider a motion to approve or deny this request.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended and incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this zoning map request for case number 2024-14. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The decision's unanimous. Approved, and a recommendation for approval will be made to the commissioners. The next case on our agenda is zoning map amendment request, case number 2024-20.
This is a rezoning 2024-20. This is a request to rezone a property from residential agricultural to rural commercial conditional district. Sorry, I don't get to say that one often. It's RCCD. This is located at 1122 Perkinson Road in the Roughland Township. This is a conditional rezoning. This is our vicinity map. We're actually in the northeast quadrant this time, outside of Eden. The zoning map, this is largely a residential agricultural area. There is a little tiny bit of residential protected south of the site. Otherwise, it is mostly just rural residential agricultural. Aerial, just showing that there is the river to the west, some minor streams in the general vicinity, nothing that's really impacting. This is the O2 land class, which does call for most properties rezoned residential agricultural. However, it does call for some rural level commercial and small shops. The little, I don't like the hashes, by the way, the new maps. I'm doing just the highlight around the parcel, just in case. So this is just the aerial of the existing conditions of the property. Everything's already existing on site. My understanding, the applicant is here, but that they just want to make use of the property in a rural, family rural occupation manner. Again, this is O2. It is characterized by areas with no public water, no public sewer, suggests some commercial land uses may be appropriate in vacant existing buildings, and also that it is relatively remain rural for the next 15 to 25 years, which is why neighborhood commercial or something more intensive wouldn't be around. But this is what the rural commercial zoning district exists for, is to keep that rural character in the area. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Did you receive any calls about this property?
I received one phone call from a gentleman. I don't believe that they even got the notice, they just saw the sign and was just curious. No comments one way or the other after I told him what was up. Vic, did you receive any? I don't think so.
And what's on this property already?
It's just an old shop. The applicant can speak more to this. This is one of Lynn's last cases, so he's the one who dealt with the applicant more than I did.
Before we have the applicant come up...
I'm sorry, shop building, I should say, not like storefront.
Right.
Okay.
Before we have the applicant come up, could you go back in the pictures to the... That one. Okay. Any other questions for Marcy?
Yeah. So this thing looks to be sitting, the building looks to be sitting very close to the property line.
It's existing as it was. I don't know when it was subdivided. The buildings are, I'm pretty sure, older than our zoning. I can't really speak to when it was done, but as it's existing real property, it's just considered legally non-conforming at this point.
Okay.
We might get that info from the applicant.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
All right, thank you, Marcy.
Yep.
Mr. Overby? For the record, please state your name and address.
Robbie Overby, 1565 Perkinson Road, Roughland, Little Carolina.
Marcy, you took our picture down?
I did. He's got his timer. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we didn't. It was the timer, the auto timer.
Got you. What can you tell us about what's on the property now? It looks, as Julie said, very close to the property line.
Right now, my uncle had it, he had it for farming use. He has some machining. He was a machinist also, made some machining work for the farming. And basically, I recently purchased a machine shop on Ashley Loop Road from a guy that's retiring, and I got approved for a small business loan to purchase all the equipment and move it to this facility. And it's just a small operation. The reason I'm doing it is to make everything legal. I mean, I didn't know what steps to really take. It's just a small operation, just...
Could you plan to include expanding the size of these buildings?
No, not, not right now. The shop by itself, it's got three-phase power running to it. It's already got some machinery hooked up inside of it. I've cleaned the building out, and the machinery I'm purchasing is CNC machinery, which is updating everything. And basically, it's just a small operation, and he has customers with Isometrics and a place, Evonix in Greensboro, that he has contracts with.
Oh, Isometrics in Reevesville?
Yes, yes. He has contracts with them to do work, and I'll be continuing doing work with them and another company in Greensboro. I've been a machinist for 25 years. I went to college. I got a four-year apprenticeship to be a journeyman mold maker. So this is something that, I inherited property not too long ago, and my parents passed away, inherited some additional support, and I was able to, you know, make this happen.
Good.
Something.
Any questions for Mr. Overby?
I don't know whether I'm allowed to ask this tonight, but I'm going to do it anyway. Tell me if I'm wrong, or you can correct me.
Oh, don't do that.
Mr. Overby, the, this thing is sitting on the, pretty much on the property line. Are you either related to, or the property nearest by to you?
It's family.
It's family, okay. That was my question. So...
I'm in talks with them, purchasing the field beside it. If this goes through, then Quinn talks about me.
Okay. Good.
It's all family around me. It's all family.
Yeah, and it, and the reason I ask is it's way easier to buy a piece, a little piece of land to make your, to make it conforming from your family than it would be from somebody else, I'm sure.
Yes, Quinn talks right now about that. It's depending on how everything goes.
Good. That's all for me.
Any other questions for Mr. Overby? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There is no one signed up to speak for or against this case, so I don't imagine Mr. Overby needs rebuttal to his own remarks.
I will point out that there is a truncated list of uses for the rural commercial as well. It's all down to very minimal impactful things. This is right there on the road. Yes, the property line is right there on the building. Again, it would be legally non-conforming as is, and we don't believe the intensity of his desired use would stray too far for a rural family established business.
Marcy, what would he have to do to be conforming?
30 feet.
So he needs to buy 30 feet on the, on that left-hand side, or on the right-hand side there, and he's, he's good to go?
Yeah, if you want to be conforming to the current dimensional standards. Again, that's only if any operation, the only requirement for him to ever have to do that is if he wanted to expand the building out that direction. Under legally non-conforming rules, he'd be able to expand out any other direction.
So he could go, he could expand in three directions?
Well, technically, he could expand to the rear. The side expansion could go with the property line. It couldn't go closer to the property line.
Right.
But this way, it corners there a little bit. It'd be difficult to go to the, to the west, but it is possible.
How far, how far back would he need to go?
What do you mean?
So it's just, it's just past the building, or it would be, if he needs the 30 feet, it's, it's in line with the building, correct?
30 foot on the east, on the northeast side of this property, by this map, would be meeting the side dimensional standards. He'll never meet the front without moving the whole building.
Right, right, right.
That's why if you expanded the building from, on the sides, he'd have to do some finagling. He can go in the rear almost all the way back. It's 30 feet all the way around. Technically, is what the setbacks would end up being.
Got it. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the zoning map change request for case number 2024-20. Oh, yeah, yeah, you need to read that, Keith. Sorry, we're gonna...
I motion recommend approval of this request to rezone the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Thank you. No, we'll take the second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the zoning map change request for case number 2024-20. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the request is approved, and an appropriate recommendation will be made to the commissioners. And our next case is a request for zoning map amendment, case number 2024-21.
Yes, this is case 2024-21 rezoning request, not fully rezoning the property. The property currently is zoned highway commercial conditional district. The request is to amend the allowed uses and expand that use table. You have an expanded table of requested uses in the packet. This is at 2554 US Highway 220. It's an old gas station, right there on the corner of Wanda and 220. It's in the Huntsville Township. This is technically a conditional rezoning. Our vicinity map, southeast quadrant. Here's the zoning of the area. It's interspersed. There's highway commercial across the street, highway commercial here, highway commercial to the south, but it's immediately abutting residential protected and residential agricultural. I was unable to find originally when it was zoned highway commercial in our records, but there's been a history of a few special use permits coming back for site plan amendments in the past, as it was for the existing uses on the property. So I apologize for not having the complete packet on that one. It's just, I scoured all the records I could find. I couldn't find anything past 99. There's also highway commercial to the north, light industrial. This is across the street from our earlier request on Gold Hill. It is in the G3 land class. We're familiar with that. Here's the aerial environmental. The property itself doesn't really contain anything outside of the norm for a commercial property. Zoomed in, you can see it's kind of an odd shape, which is partially why the staff is good with the change of uses to the extent that they are, because the nature of the property itself would also end up limiting and restricting impacts to neighboring properties for the types of uses that could occur. So we do find that this is consistent with the land use plan. It's, we find it also to be reasonable due to the fact that it has existed as highway commercial conditional district for so many years. And plus, it'd be nice to see something done with the property as opposed to just sitting there.
It's not functioning as a service station now, gas station?
What it was, but this, this past weekend, I believe, one of the tanks, not this past one, but the weekend before last, they had some...
Struck it.
Yeah, and the underground tank, so it's not been in operation for a long, for a long time. It's the one you can see with a bunch of graffiti and things like that.
It's a graffiti.
I did receive, I received two phone calls related to this property. One person was in favor, just because they want to see something go there and clean up the area. The other person just asked me questions. Vic, did you receive? I didn't think so either. So it was just about the two phone calls related to this. Again, we see no problems with the requests. Largely, the shape, again, the shape of the property is going to limit a lot of availability there.
So what changes were made?
Like I said, I can't find the original files.
You, oh, but you said there was, the request here, we requested some additional features in the, in the land use?
They're requesting additional uses. The current chart that you've got in your ordinance here has some that are struck out, but the majority of them are pulled back in. We can't find the original file of what limited, what uses were. We can't find the original file of what limited, what uses were available then.
We don't know exactly what was added back in.
Correct.
Okay.
Whether that file's missing, misplaced, misfiled, all I can find was the file from 1999 that did the canopy, where they came for a site plan amendment to add the canopy.
It was a hurricane or something, right?
Probably, who knows anymore? Hurricanes keep coming here instead. But no, I, like I said, I apologize, I just was unable to track down what the original conditions and the conditional uses were.
Any questions for Marcy?
So why did we mark out beer, wine, and liquor store? Is that, is that an exclusive beer, wine, and liquor store?
Yeah, that, that's going to be like the exclusive use in that area, like a package store.
Got it.
This literally is the last case Lynn worked on.
No questions?
Ma'am, I have no one signed up to speak for this case. Someone did sign up, but then scratched it.
The applicant took his name off after...
You scratched it all out. Are you the applicant, sir? You can speak if you wish, we'll, we'll permit it.
For the record... My name's Nick Quakila. I live at 4517 Pike Drive, Madowee, Louisiana, moving up here. So a hurricane is hitting my state as we speak, and two days before, when I go back. But I'm not bringing any back this way. I won't. My wife and kids wanted to get out of New Orleans, decided to move up here, and they moved to Oak Ridge, so I want to get closer to my wife and kids. I'm in the used car business. I love used cars and golf cart sales. Looked for a decent property and found an old, beat-up, ugly, sore-looking gas station. I figured I can make something nice out of it. Sadly, I came in today and I saw a nice little hole in the ground, so... Honestly, that's all what I'm doing with it, nothing else. And we just made sure that in case, down the line, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, I decide to sell the property, somebody doesn't have to rezone it or go through another zoning change in, in order to stop the process, that's all.
Any questions?
My pleasure. Thank you.
Again, we won't need any rebuttal. I don't think he wants to speak against his own comments, so... Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for approval.
Go ahead.
A motion to recommend approval of this request to rezone the specified parcel of the, of the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the Board Agenda Packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and it may be amended incorporated into the motions to be included into the minutes.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve case 2024-21. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. The vote's unanimous. Recommendation for approval will be made to the commissioners.
It is October 21st.
I had it right.
You didn't.
The next item on our agenda is new business, which we have none, and then followed by old business, which we have none. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn so we can all go home and watch some football. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Meetings adjourned.